Folks, we're going to call a meeting to order tonight and thank everybody for coming. We do have a few people in there, but opening ceremonies should be in place for the most part there. At this time, I'll have our town clerk read the warrant, please. You can stay seated, Anita, if you want. Right there. Nope. Nope.
Now you're right.
Try again.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Elementary School Gymnasium, 65 Glenwood Road, Rutland, Mass., in said Rutland on Saturday, the sixth day of May, 2023, at 6:00 in the evening, then in there to act on the following articles.
At this time, I will ask Mr. John Fitzgerald, an active member here within the community, to come up and give our invocation. Mr. Fitzgerald is coming. Perfect.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all the many blessings in our lives, especially for this wonderful community and all who are gathered at our annual town meeting. We ask for your guidance and strength. Give us the patience and understanding to face the challenges before us this evening. Even though we may have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen respectfully as others share their points of view. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and be faithful in service to you. Help us as we work together to bring about the best outcome for the town of Rutland, a community that we all care so deeply about. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to stand, and I'm going to call up Sophia Dusette, Jr., a Wachusett Regional, to sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
If everybody stays standing, we're going to salute the flag at the same time, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on individual liberty and justice for all. Everybody can be seated now. Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Hopefully, all our resident voters all have a clicker in your hand, and we will have a test run with that in a few moments. I'd like to introduce everybody that's sitting up here at the head table. To my immediate right is Karen Norwell, Chairman of the Finance Board. Beside her is Alex Moawat. All right, Alex, it's Tommy Rochaughers beside him. I tried. We have Lynn Winnecker beside Tommy. We have Peter O'Malley. We have an empty spot, and that will be filled here shortly as he's getting off a plane, and that will be Darren Ross coming in, and we have Ted Purcell at the end down there. To my left, we have Anita Carlson, who is the town clerk. Beside Anita Carlson, we have Lauren Goldberg. I know her name. She's been here quite a few years. She's town council to keep us all out of trouble. Beside Lauren, we have our new town administrator, Austin. And he does have a last name, but I'm going to screw that one up, so we're just going to stop there. And then we have Gary Kelleher, who has helped through this process of finding Austin and run the town for the last several months. Beside Gary, we have Carol Benoit. She was a Willie, so I usually call her a Willie, but she's Carol Benoit, Chairman of the Board. Beside Carol, we have Lear Whitman. Beside Lear, we have Tom Galvin. Beside Tom, we have Skip Clark, and besides Skip, we have Lyndon Nichols at the far end. And I am your town moderator tonight. And at this time, I'm going to have Austin come up and Gary come up and say a few words. Correct? Please.
Saganowicz, everybody. It's Austin Saganowicz. Just so you know, and first of all, I want to thank you all for being here. This is a very important town meeting. We have a lot of...
Come closer to me, because they won't be able to hear you.
Can everybody hear me? How's that? Where was I? Again, thank you all for being here. We've got some important items to discuss tonight. And to coin a phrase of Mr. Jordan's, I also see the end of the line, despite the rumors that he's spreading. Anyway, just a little informational, if you will, on the process. I'd first certainly like to thank members of the FinCom, certainly members of the Board, certainly Tamika Murphy. We've all worked very hard. It's been a grueling several months here to try to come up with a budget, but we've done that, and we all support the proposal of a two-and-a-half override. And I'll tell you why. For the last probably 10 years, from when I served prior to here as a DPW director, it was a constant, constant cut. Every year was a cut, cut, cut. And we're always able to survive. At the end of the year, we would pull a rabbit out of our hat. We would find something to make us be operationally sound. It's not there this year. There are no more rabbits. Initially, the first cut from all your major departments was over $1 million, more in the tune of 1.2. That's excruciatingly painful for all of them. We don't want you, the residents of Rutland, not to have the services you deserve. We have to be operationally sound. We have to move forward. All the department heads, the meetings, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, hours, hours and hours of late nights discussions, trying to get all this together. And believe me when I tell you, it was sitting in that office was a painful process. Sometimes when it came to a decision and it was time to hit submit or send, all I did was pace, because I just didn't want to send that news out. We came up with, obviously, the two-and-a-half override proposal, and we have the final iteration of the budget, which would severe cuts. It's severe cuts. It will make virtually your town, your town departments, part-time, and we can't have that. We can't operate on a part-time schedule with all your town buildings and all your crew and staff. Very important that you consider this. Also, I know nobody likes a tax increase. I get it. We haven't had one here. And for the last, from looking at the chart, remembering the chart in my head, the tax rate has gone down consistently every year for, I want to say, eight or nine years. I can't, there's no control that we have over the assessments. I get it. I understand it. Last year alone, the cost of living increase was 8.37%. All of our supplies and services have risen. The town has to put, to find that money somewhere to make this happen. So I don't want, I just want you to take this, you people are the bosses, 9,600 of you, you will decide what you want, what you need. The needs-based budget that we initially worked on is putting all your departments back where they should be. There's really no extras. If we lose people in public safety, public works, town buildings because of the latest iteration without the acceptance of a two-and-a-half override, it's going to be tough. And we'll all see that July 1st. So please, please take that into consideration in your thought and your thought process. There'll be a lot of questions and answers for you tonight. We'll guide you through the process of what we've gone through. Again, I want to thank, obviously, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, Lauren, Austin Saganowicz, the new guy, he's the new guy, and all of you for being here and supporting us. It's been a, for me, it's been an honor and a privilege to come back to the town of Rutland and put in my 12 months. So I've been here 12 months, and it's been great. Your department heads are great. It was a collaborative effort, and I think we've certainly done the best we can with what we have, and we want better for you. We want to be able to survive. So again, I thank you all very much, and Mr. Kanakioli, welcome back. It's nice to see you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
The pleasure's always mine, sir. And with that, Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Gary. All right, so at this time, I'd like Austin just to give a few words as well.
Well, hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm the new guy, Austin Saganowicz. I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the new town administrator here. Certainly see a lot of familiar faces already. This is a great turnout, but I look forward to meeting. I know many of you, which I know I will get to meet many of you over the next few years. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to talk a little bit about the budget and introduce myself as well. I grew up in central Massachusetts. Rutland is a community that I'm very familiar with, so again, it's an honor to be here and to talk about some of the needs that we have for the organization, how we can meet the expectations that you have for your local government. So the FY 2024 budget. Oh, this is just a picture that I recently took of Town Hall. That's a joke. That's a joke. So what is a budget? A budget is essentially your policy document. If not, it's your most important policy document that a government sets forth on a yearly basis, that sets forth your priorities. And when you're developing the budget, typically, you identify the goals for departments and services and the committees and for our town staff to ex... You lost me. Good to go? Can you hear me? Okay. So as town departments work throughout the year to develop their budget, we are working to identify what we think the town needs over the next, over the next year. And it's clear, so I'm only three weeks on the job today, but it's very clear that over the past several years, and especially this year, it is a priority to make sure that we have the adequate resources in terms of staffing and services to provide those services that you are all familiar with and that you expect and that you deserve. So that's one of the main, if not the first, priority for this budget. And with those resources, we're able to identify ways that we can be more efficient, ways that we can serve you better. A lot of things you've done, a lot of good work already through regionalization and your dispatch, and I think some other services that I think we have a lot of opportunities to be able to take advantage of. And also utilizing technology, like our online permitting system, our website, social media, ways to communicate with you better. We need staff to be able to do that. But also recognizing that the investment that you make in your tax bills and the fees and the monies that you provide to the town government, those are investments that you're making in your government. So we want to protect those investments. We want to protect the assets, and we want to make sure that the services that we're providing are meeting your expectations. We also want to make sure that we are, again, meeting the needs of you. When you come into town buildings or you contact town office, we want to make sure that we have high customer service and high levels of service for you as residents, but also the greater Rutland community. Rutland has become a destination for many, to visit, to shop, and obviously, to live. And recognizing that not only Rutland, but this region continues to grow, so we need to make sure that we're planning ahead and have the adequate resources to be able to do that. So that's, in my opinion, the end of Week Three. That, I think, is what this budget will do for you. So just a quick overview, and I don't want to bore you with numbers, but this is what the position of the community looks like in terms of revenues and expenses. Now, again, I don't want to bore you with numbers, but I'll quickly go through again on the revenue side. You can see that revenues are pretty tight, and we're mostly supported by the tax levy. Most communities are. We're about 80% is supported through the tax levy. Now, what's interesting about Rutland, but it's certainly not unique to Rutland, is we do have a significant position in terms of our local receipts. So that's your motor vehicle excise, some of the departmental receipts that you have. Again, I don't want to bore you, but one thing I do want to highlight is state aid continues to be a problem for Rutland, not only for the local government, but obviously for our educational partners as well. If you notice, the red column or the red bar in this bar chart continues to shrink over the past 10 years. The Mass Municipal Association has indicated that since fiscal year 2008, while state revenues have increased 93%, our local aid is actually 4.5% below what it was in fiscal year 2008. So clearly, we have a revenue issue in terms of revenue sharing from the state. So what does that do? That places a heavier burden on the tax levy and some of our other local receipts that we have and revenue sources. Certainly, I think that can't be solved overnight, but certainly that's why there's a heavier burden on the tax levy. So our expenses. This is just a quick breakdown by some of the functions and categories of what this budget looks like. You can see, obviously, we, like most communities are, heavy, we're an educational community. We also have a quality public service operation, around 15%. But this is what, this is where your tax dollars go, and these are the services that are provided. And I just want to close out with a couple of slides in terms of really what this budget does provide for you, and I mentioned it a little bit at the beginning, but Gary had mentioned it in his remarks, but over the past several years, our departments have witnessed reduced staffing because of reduced funding. So staffing levels are at the, in my opinion, comparison to other comparable communities, they're at the bare minimum. So what we're looking to do is to make sure that the offices are staffed with adequate resources and people to be able to provide those services that you need and to meet our needs as an operation. We're also recognizing that because we have a high student population, we have a growing senior population, services like the senior center and the library, there's a need for those services. So this proposed budget does provide increased resources for those departments and other community initiatives. And we're also, as Gary mentioned, you know, some of the easier things to cout over the past few years are our supplies and services lines. Those are some of the things that you necessarily can't see, but we're making sure that our budgets are in line with realistic costs, like our utility and our fuel expenses. And I just want to close, and there's obviously no data here, but this is just a few snapshots of really what your government looks like, whether it's providing a food service at the senior center with Chief Monaco and Congressman McGovern, some of our staff at the fire department, Asland, the children's librarian, and then some of the infrastructure work that we continue to do. This budget continues to provide the resources so we can continue to do a lot of the great work that you see, not only in these pictures, but that you see every day as you're going through town. So just to close out, I just want to refer you to those who have a handout. I'm not sure if everyone does, but on page 12 is the actual budget. And what we're presenting in this document, as Gary mentioned, is an override, proposed override budget. So on page 12, starting over the next few pages, you see just the numbers of what each department looks like, and that is in the middle gray column, recommended budget, FY 2024. So everything I mentioned and more, and we can certainly, if there's questions particularly about certain detail of the departments, but these are what your departments are asking for, for resources to be able to do everything I just mentioned and more. And of course, if the override is not successful, the two right columns are what the proposed reductions are for what we're calling the cut budget, to make sure we still have a balanced budget presented to town meeting. We're recommending the middle column. We're recommending the override budget. If you have any questions about this document, happy to answer them, but I just, again, want to close. Thank you. I look forward to meeting you, and I look forward to working with you to make sure that we can continue to make the town of Rutland's services the best that you all expect and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. So we're going to go, everyone's got a clicker in their hands, and they should have it if you're a town resident and you checked in. So the ones that don't have it, obviously, probably aren't residents or skipped the line and didn't get it. So we're going to have three test questions, just so everybody understands how to use it, and we want to make sure the system is working fully. My technical staff behind me has, I will, the first question, we're going to do three test questions. So the first question is, are the Celtics going to win their next game? Yes or no? Yes will be green and no will be red, and if you're uncertain, you can use the yellow button. All those in favor, please press the green button of the Celtics winning. All those opposed or not going to win, use the red button. And I'll give you a few moments, and then we'll do a tally, and we'll see how close or, I can tell you how many people are here. No, the button is already on. You just have to press it once, and it should go normally.
Is that too much?
No. Benny, go look at it. Make it better. All right, if you have a question, Benjamin will do the question. We'll just wait a minute.
Yes.
And if, and if it's not working, you don't get a one or two, you can hit that airplane thing above the green, but normally, we don't have to do that.
If it's successful, it should say okay, correct?
Did you just say one or two?
It's okay.
That was a misstatement. I brought that up. That was a many, many...
Right, but it should say okay.
Do we know how?
On the side.
I realize that, but how many people...
Yeah, it's like 40 cents.
No, it's not.
All those ballot who wish, I will declare the ballot box closed, and if you've got questions, Benjamin's going to do whatever Benjamin does to make it better.
Seems to be the one over 200.
So maybe we're going to wait a minute here. Typically, we don't have clicker problems, but we're here to help it. I have 209 on the tally already, Benjamin. That's why we have tests, folks.
one way or another, that we're trying to get the number as close to as many people who have checked in. Currently, there are 255-ish people checked in that have come through the door, and I only have 224 people that have voted, and that is a total of yes, no, and maybes. So there's potentially 30 of you that either didn't vote or it didn't work properly. And Benjamin hasn't come back in yet, so I can't try number two.
And Randy, that's okay. You shouldn't. Just yes or no. That's it. Yes or no? No, maybe. But no, maybe. They shouldn't be voting maybe. It adds them to the number. It adds them to the number of total votes, and so for 234, it screws that up. Saying maybe is the same thing as saying no. So it shouldn't, they should only press red or green.
I knew this meeting was going to be riveting.
I don't know. I don't know where the maybes are. So I don't think the maybes are showing up, and that could be one of the reasons that you have less people that you do register voters.
All right, folks, we're going to vote again. We're going to do two, and I would strongly encourage no maybes or no yellows. We're going to do yes or no, and more or less, if a, if you wanted to do maybe, please do no instead of maybe, and we're going to try to make the counter work we're at. So question two, we're going to do green or red, and green is, is it going to be beautiful all week? Hit green if you'd like sun to be out all week, and if you want it to rain this week, please hit the red button. I have been told you can change your vote until I close the ballot box. So if you vote green and you wanted to change it to a no, you can hit the no button, and in turn, it will automatically change it within the system. Until I declare the ballot box closed, my technical support team will not allow you to change it within the system. So we're closer. We're at 243. Of all ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. So we got 213 people that thinks it's going to be sunny all week and 31 that thinks it's going to, or wants to rain. All right. Final and last question is, everybody thinks we're going to be out of here by 9:00? Hit green. All those that hit red after 9:00, you can leave now. Ballot box is open. Now, I realize we're an hour late, so that might be off a little bit, but... voting. I will declare the ballot boxed. I will declare the ballot boxed, closed. We've got 243 total votes, 130 yeses, 113 nos. Wow, let's see, we got a challenge here now, tonight, so. All right, we're gonna get started, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight on such a beautiful day, and we're gonna get right started off on it. If you have questions, you're gonna come to the mic here tonight, and you wait until be addressed by myself, and you, you speak through me to any questions and go from there, and hopefully, we can control the number of questions that we have tonight, and we'll try to stay on topic and on subject when you come up to do it. If you're not, I will ask you nicely to ask a different question, or wait until later. So I think we'll start. Article one, hear the annual report of the town offices and committees.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear the annual reports of the town officers and committees.
Second. Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green button, all those opposed will be the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed, 232 yeses, nine nos. Motion carries. Moving on to article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town offices for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, in accordance with chapter 41, section 108 of the general laws, as amended, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, in accordance with chapter 41, section 108 of the general laws, as amended, as printed in article two of the law.
Second. Motion made in second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons, all those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted, uh, ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed, 228 yeses, 19 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums of money as be made necessary to defray the expenses of the municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, provided, however, that the vote taken under, hereunder, shall be expressively contingent upon passages by the voters at an election of Prop. 2.5 override. Questions allowing the town to raise by taxation a sum of money in excess of the limit established by Prop. 2.5, or take any action in relation thereto? When you read the motion, please read closer to your mics, or second, please.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the total sum of $9,698,567.88 to transfer $252,698 from free cash, all in the amounts and for the purposes set forth in the handout entitled "Operation Budget Detail." Budget Detail. In the column labeled "Recommended Budget" to defray the expenses of municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, provided, however, that the amounts listed in the Budget Detail override amounts column shall be expressly contingent.
Second. Motion is made in second, a recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? You don't necessarily need to wait to be called on, if you move to the mic closer, if you'd like to talk at the same time, I will recognize you as you come forward. When you come to the mic, please state your name, address, and salute. Oh, no. You gotta speak really loud into the mic.
Karine Pulianko, 11 Sunny Side Am, and I've lived in Rutland all my life. I'm obviously a senior citizen, and I live on a fixed income. My taxes will go up plus or minus approximately $500 a year. If I can find $10 a week to stick in a job, so that if I call 911, the ambulance, or the police officer, or the fire department will show up, or I can get out of my driveway because the roads have been plowed and sanded, or drive to our town apartment and see the grass has been mowed, or go to the senior center to get information about services I might need, or enjoy one of the wonderful programs that the library puts on, or even just get a book to read, because if the library closes, I will not be able to get a book in Rutland, but I won't be able to get a book anywhere else in Massachusetts, any other library. That's a lot of things to lose for less than $1.50 a day. It's so important to pass this override, and it isn't that hard. Make your car be at home a couple days a week, and drive past Dunkin'. Skip a restaurant meal once a month that covers the whole month. I could probably find $10 a week trolling Big Wives Poppin' Lock, tipping up change. There must be lots of things that people can do to save $10 a week. And I not only want the ambulance, or the police, or the fire department to show up at my house, but I want it to show up at everybody's house. Think of the consequences for not overriding, for not passing the override, and I have, all my life, when I've been coming to town meetings, I have trusted the judgment of the finance committee and the boards, because they know a whole lot more about Rutland's finances than I do. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ruth Rivezi, 23, Maple Spring Dr. Oh, I can't.
Is the mic on, Paul?
It's on.
Howard, it's already on, he can control it from here. Try that, please.
Hello?
Nope.
Does it work?
There's nothing.
Yeah.
Can you yell while they do the?
Try.
Oh, there you go. Maybe you don't need to yell.
Sounds like ET. Hello?
Try that, please.
Hello? Yes?
Move closer.
One, one, can you count? No disrespect, but can you count?
I can.
Count for them.
I buy turkeys from you every year, I can count.
Step closer to the mic.
Step closer? All right, okay. Now I need my glasses. Okay, Ruth Rivezi, 23, Maple Spring Drive. I'm here also as the trustee of the, the chairperson of the trustees of the public library. The trustees appreciate the diligence that has gone into the development of the fiscal year 24 budget and the recommendation for an override of Proposition 2.5. Without the override, the library is likely to have a 32% reduction in our operating budget compared to this year's $259,489 to a proposed $195,867. This reduction will have a significant impact on library services to our community. It does not require the library to close, however, it does drastically jeopardize our status as a certified library in Massachusetts. The Board of Library Commissioners would most likely vote to decertify the Rutland Public Library based on the budget decrease. Certification includes a formula for a community's minimum financial contribution to library services. Decertification will result in the cancellation of reciprocal privileges, which was spoken about earlier, that we would be unable to borrow materials from other libraries across the state, an end of accessing eBooks through the overdrive system, as well as becoming ineligible to receive state funds for the library. Rutland residents would be limited to only materials available in our own collection. The trustees also anticipate a significant reduction in the library's hours of operation, the programming we offer, and the availability of meeting space in the building. The library is a cornerstone of our community and needs to be supported, and we appreciate the recommendations of the finance committee and the select board in terms of providing adequate funding for the library, so thank you.
Lori Becker, 18, Crestview Drive. I just have a question. On article two, when we voted, it didn't say anything about being contingent upon the override, but yet, when I'm looking through, it's looking like if the override doesn't pass, they would cut these things. How is that possible if we already voted?
It should be on.
Mr. Moderator, three, Lauren.
Why, certainly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then lesser, a lesser amount will be appropriated. So the contingency is on the actual dollar amount, the first article, article two just sets the, the amount that should be, that the fund should be, that the line should be funded at, but article three is where the money is.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other, is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, article three, please use your green button, all those opposed, please use your red button. All the votes that we're taking tonight, unless I notify you, it was just a majority vote, so it only needs 51% to pass or greater. All those ballot who wish, I did declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 207 yes, 38 nos. Moving on to article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1 of 2023, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $605,442 to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Second. A motion's made and seconded, is there a recommendation of the finance? No. Recommendation of the finance, just loud.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
We're working on the mics to the best of our ability. It should be in a packet, the motion, or the motion is relatively similar to what I'm reading you as the article. If you can't hear it, or you don't have your packet, please ask, but we're working on trying to make the mics better. So there was a motion made, seconded, and the finance recommends favorably. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Charlene O'Connor, Sycamore Drive. I just want to know, is this an increase from last year, or a decrease? And how many students does it represent? Thank you.
When you come to the mic, you have to speak louder with the mic. Okay, so what she asked, and I'll paraphrase to the best I can, what does that represent in numbers versus last year versus this year, and does it change the number of kids that are attending Bay Path? Joe, can you answer that maybe, quicker than others? This is the chairman of the school committee of Bay Path, right here, folks.
And we also have the superintendent from the district here as well, if I can't answer all the questions. There is a decrease of 14.93% to Rutland's assessment, and there is a decrease of 10 students between the fiscal years.
Is there any other, is there any other questions? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons, all those opposed, please use your red buttons.
All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed.
Motion carries, 212 yeses, 30 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Waukesha Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation to?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $8,718,417 to defray the expenses of the Waukesha Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, a recommendation of the finance board.
Mr. Moderator, the finance board recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you.
Susan Steffen, 22, Fernwood Drive. And I just was wondering, for my own information and everybody's information, how does this question relate to six, seven, eight, which all seem to be about the schools?
This is the minimum local contribution that we are required to pay based upon state law for Waukesha. All the other ones are debt service, transportation, so we split out the budget.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons, all those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 203 yeses, 40 nos. Moving on to article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Waukesha Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $8,718,417 to defray the expenses of the Waukesha Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, a recommendation of the finance board.
Mr. Moderator, the finance board recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you.
Susan Steffen, 22, Fernwood Drive. And I just was wondering, for my own information and everybody's information, how does this question relate to six, seven, eight, which all seem to be about the schools?
This is the minimum local contribution that we are required to pay based upon state law for Waukesha. All the other ones are debt service, transportation, so we split out the budget.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons, all those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 203 yeses, 40 nos. Moving on to article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Waukesha Regional School District debt service assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take
to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District debt service assessment for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Does it, motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 201 yeses, 38 no's. Moving on to Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District transportation assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $1,530,30 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District transportation assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by using your green button. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. Folks, if you choose to leave before the end of the meeting, which is perfectly acceptable, please turn in your clickers out there at the desk to the folks out there. It's very critical that we get them all back, please, so we can use them for our next year's time.
One second on this next one.
All those ballot who wish. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 184 yeses, 47 no's. I've been asked nicely to pause for a moment. The turnee is probably going to be done by the time I read it, so I'm going to read it. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District operational assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and shall be expressly contingent upon passage by the voters at an election of the prop, Proposition Override Questioning, Question Allowing the Town to Raise by Taxation a Sum of Money in Excess of the Limit established of the Prop 2 and 1/2, or Take Any Action in Relation Thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
What happened?
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $4,614,214 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District operations assessments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, provided, however, that of that amount, the sum of $50,000 shall be expressly contingent upon passage by the voters at an election of a Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called override question, allowing the town to raise taxes by $2 million in excess of the levy limit.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
John Rakiki, 17 Proudly Lane. Thank you for answering my one question around the $50,000 amount. This is more now a statement on the article. This $50,000 is leveraging a number of things within the district. If we, one, if four out of five towns were to pass a budget without Rutland, we would still have to come up with that $50,000 in order to cover our expenses under the regional agreement. If, if in fact, no one can it, we would then, and, and the towns chose to meet a Rutland number, you would look at, at another couple hundred thousand dollar reduction in the budget of the Wachusett School District. So this is, you know, I appreciate the efforts of the members of the town, putting together this package override to, to make both schools and municipals participating together. I think that it's incumbent upon everyone that supports both sides to come out and support the override on this. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. I declare the ballot box closed. All, uh, motion carries, 185 yes, 60 no's. Moving on to Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the debt services of the fiscal year beginning July 1, uh, the beginning of July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $919,401 and transfer $112,365 from the Rutland Heights Sale of Property Account to defray the expenses of debt service for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. Those are, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. And yes, folks, this is Darren Ross, who just walked in, flew in from Florida, just to be with us tonight. Mr. Ross?
Good afternoon, Mr. Ross. He's nicer in Florida, by the way.
I declare the ballot box. The clicker's still moving, so I... Closed. 212 yeses, motion carries, 28 no's. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from receipts and revenues of the Water and Sewer Enterprises or from any other available funds a sum of money to operate the Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise from receipts and revenues of the Water and Sewer Enterprise a sum of $2,897,941.2 to operate the Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by using your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. I declare the ballot box closed. 200 yeses, 25 no's.
207.
207. Glad you guys can see those numbers. Going to move on to Articles 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from receipts and revenues of the PEG access and cable funds or from any other available fund, sums of fund of money, fund of PEG access cable-related operations or the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise from receipts and revenue of the PEG access and cable fund a sum of $249,222 to fund PEG access and cable related to operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any, now I'm off. Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish. Hope it was nothing I said, they're all leaving. All those voted, I declare the ballot box closed. 180, 189 yeses, 34 no's. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to cover the expenses from Snow and Ice Supply Account 0014235400-000 for the fiscal year 2023, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $201,964.66 to cover expenses from the Snow and Ice Supplies Account 001-423-5400-000 for fiscal year 2023.
And seconded, is there any discuss, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those, please use your green buttons for yes. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 202 yeses, 12 no's. Moving on to Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for capital equipment, buildings, facilities, and other projects, including applicable site preparation, demolition, equip, equipping of vehicles, and all other incidental or related costs, and authorize the Select Board to take any eminent domain purchases or otherwise acquire any fees, easement, or interest in the land necessary, therefore, to determine whether funding shall be provided by the tax levy, transfer for available funds, borrowing, or any, any combination of these methods, and as may be applicable to authorize lease purchase agreements, and take further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any federal or state grants, funds, or private donations that may be available to such capital improvement, or take such other actions as may be necessary to... Karen, what's that word?
Effectuate.
Effectuate the vote taken hereunder, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to pass over Article 13.
Second.
Why couldn't we have told them that two minutes ago? Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends no action on this article.
So that's what, is to take no action. A yes vote, a no vote, to vote down.
So a yes vote would be to take no action on this, and a no vote would be?
To, 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 um...
Vote down the motion.
Vote down this, this motion, and a positive motion could be made after that.
Do we all hear that? Okay, so a yes vote would be to take no action. If a no vote, if you choose to do a no vote, then we could have, look at another motion afterwards to take a different vote for that situation. Correct?
Correct.
To, to take action, but it would take another motion to take action. Wow. And it doesn't have to be two-thirds to take no action. All those in favor of taking no actions, hit that green button, please. All those that want to confuse me, hit the no button. Wow. Really? Why'd they put it on there? They shouldn't have put it on there. Should have taken it off. I declare the ballot box closed. 186 yes, 12 no. So we agreed to take no action. Thank you. Moving on to Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into contracts for goods and services for the duration in the excess of three years to pursue, to their provisions of MGL Section 30B, Section 12B, or take any action in relation thereto.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into contracts for goods and services with duration in excess of three years pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 30B, Section 12B.
Second.
And is, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. I declare the ballot box closed. 174 yes, 13 no. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, expend any grants or donation from the state and federal government, or private agencies, individuals, or institutions, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or donations from the state, federal government, private agencies, individuals, and institutions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Mr. Carnacchioli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Lou Carnacchioli. I live at 18 Blueberry Lane, here in the great town of Rutland, Massachusetts. At the end of this, of this agenda, there's a citizen petition, and the citizen happens to be me. I have petitioned, and it goes along with this article that I see here, about authorizing to get involved in grants, et cetera. I believe that there, I know, not believe, I know in my discussions, both with Mr. McGovern's office and with the State Rep and State Senate office, that there are millions of dollars available in grants that are sitting out there, millions. Not hundred thousand, but millions. Many of them came because of COVID. But we don't have anybody, to my knowledge, who is actively writing grants. That's your new job? Is that what you're going to do? Along with all the other duties? Okay. Well, then I can withdraw. Are you, are you going to do this on an active basis? Because I would, it would seem to me that that's going to take up an inordinate amount of your time to go after grants. I'm familiar with grants. There's grants both from the state, from the federal government, and also from the private sector, that you could get grants that might deal with stuff like the Senior Center for Seniors, and also. So I'm in favor of the Select Board reaching out to get these, but I think we should be more aggressive and more active. And my petition calls for, whether it's full-time or part-time, a person that would be titled, for lack of a better term, Assistant Town Administrator, who would specifically go after grants, specifically, would spend a major part of their time writing grants. In this day and age, we are foolish if we are not actively going after grants every minute of the day. I mean, we should be after them all the time. And we have a perfect person already working for the town. Because the question was, how does Mr. Carnacchioli going to fund this thing? Well, we already have a person, and if you want to hear who the person is, stick around to Article 34, or 24, and I'll tell you then. But we have a person, so it's not going to cost the town a lot of money. So I'm glad to see the selectmen moving in that direction. I hope people will stick around and vote for number 24, and we get ourselves a real active grant writer. Doesn't have to be 40 hours a week. That person could do it 25, or 30, or maybe 20, depending on what's going on that particular week. But we have to be aggressive. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to sit down.
Try to stay on topic, please.
He's talking to me now, Lou. John Rukicki, 17 Proudly Lane. Good evening, Lou. Through the moderator to the Select Board, how does this change the way we would do things, you know, if we voted in favor of this? What are we doing now? How would this change that?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, this article is a standard article. The petition that Mr. Canacchioli is referencing is 34. This article is standard, and it has been voted like this for all the years, at least that I've been doing this. It makes no change. It just ensures that the Select Board has the authority to do what it needs to do.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 201 yeses, 4 noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds which become available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways in the fiscal year 2024, Chapter 90 bond issues proceeded or other grant programs to be used by the Department of Public Works for the repair and maintenance of the town roads in conformance with the Massachusetts General Law, and further the town vote to raise said appropriation by borrowing and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore anticipation of the receipt of said state aid, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate all funds which become available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways in the fiscal year 2024, Chapter 90 bond issues proceeds or other grant program funds to be used by the Department of Public Works for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with Massachusetts general laws, and further that the town vote to raise said appropriation by borrowing and to authorize the town treasurer with approval from the Select Board to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore in anticipation of receipt of said state aid.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by using your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 196 yes, 5 noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 17, to see if the town will vote to pursue the provisions of MGL Section 44, Section 53E and a half, to establish a fiscal year 2024 spending limits for the revolving funds listed in the Section 6 of the bylaws of the same name as set forth in Article Number 17 of the warrant, which such expenditure limits is to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1 in any year to change the limits for the ensuing fiscal year, provided, however, that at the request of the entities authorized to expend such funds, the Select Board with the approval of the Finance Committee may increase limits for a fiscal year only, or take any action in relation there, too.
I move that the town vote...
Just excuse me, there's a, we want to say, don't say names, say limits. It's over. Change the name for the...
Just put the limit?
Limits, yep.
Limits, okay. Here we go. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of MGL C4453E and a half to establish the fiscal year 2024 spending limits for the revolving funds listed in Section 6 of the bylaw of the same name as set forth in Article Number 17 of the warrant, with such expenditure limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1 in any year to change the limits for the ensuing fiscal year, provided, however, that at the request of the entity authorized to expend such funds, the Select Board with the approval of the Finance Committee may increase such limits for the fiscal year only.
Second. Seconded, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries. 180 yes, 12 noes. Moving on to Article 18, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to file with the General Court special legislation to change the office of town clerk from elected to appointed, with such changes to take effect upon the expiration of the current term of the elected town clerk holding office at this time, the special act takes effect, or her sooner vacating of the office. Please provide, however, that the General Court shall make changes to the bill of the form only without the approval of the Select Board, and to authorize the Select Board to approve changes within public purpose of this petition, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to file with the General Court special legislation to change the office of town clerk from elected to appointed, with such change to take effect upon the expiration of the current term of the elected town clerk holding office at the time the special act takes effect, or her sooner vacating of office, provided, however, that the General Court shall make changes to the bill of form only without the approval of the Select Board, and to authorize the Select Board to approve changes within the public purposes of this petition.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Hi. Hello, hi. Trossa Santillo, 124 Charnock Hill Road. My question is, if this article passes, will there be a residency, a Rutland residency requirement for the person who is appointed to this position? The explanation says that this is to establish equity amongst department heads while ensuring that qualified candidates are being considered for the position. That would suggest that the town would look beyond Rutland for qualified candidates. So if, in fact, someone is appointed, and this article passes and someone is appointed, does that person need to live in Rutland, or did they need to move here? That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you. This article simply changes the office from elected to appointed. It does not impose a residency requirement on an appointed position.
Mr. Moderator, Lou Carnacchioli again, 18 Blueberry Lane. I stand up and I'm urging everybody in this hall tonight to vote no on this. This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. We are in a form of government which has a, recently, we have a town administrator, not a town manager, town administrator. We have a number of elected boards. There are a number of boards that do not come under the purview of the, of the selectmen. Why should the town clerk all of a sudden come under that board? I, it just doesn't make any sense. The town clerk should be independent. The three, to me, the people who should be elected are the Board of Selectmen, the Town Moderator, and the Town Clerk, for independence, okay? So they're not beholden to anybody. They're not under the thumb of anybody. They, they represent us. If we don't like the job the town clerk is doing, let's vote the person out of, out of office. I've been here since 1973. Every one of the town clerks that I have been, seen in this town have done a superlative job. I was a selectman for nine years. Our, our town clerk, I believe at the time was Sally Hayden. We never had a problem with Sally. She did a terrific job. I know what Anita's doing. Anita is doing a terrific job. Such a good job that every year she gets reelected. Every time she's up, she's reelected. Because we, the voters, we, the people who run this town, know that she is doing a great job. She deserves to be voted in by the people. If we don't like her, we vote her out. Just like if we don't like the moderator, we vote him out, okay? If we don't like him. But we like you, and every year, every year, no, no, every year you get, you get reelected. But we're the ones who determine it, not the Board of Selectmen. And when I was a selectman, I wouldn't want that power. I wouldn't want that power to determine. That's an important position, the town clerk. So I'm asking you, vote this thing down. Thank you very much.
Karine Puliafico again, Sunnyside Ave. I totally agree with Mr. Canacchioli that we have had great town clerks. We have been very lucky. Now, if Anita decides she doesn't want to run again, and I decide I want to run, well, if I'm a popular person, I could probably get elected. But if you could see my checkbook, you would no way vote for me. So I think this is a good article. I think it should pass.
Is there any other discussion?
Peter Paceherb, 20 Highland Park Road. I happen to be aware, being a commission member myself, that any commission member, matter of fact, anybody who speaks at town meeting, unless there's no objection from the floor, is required to be a resident of the town of Rutland. Frankly, I think that requirement should be in place, and if it's not, I would say vote the article down.
Is there any other discussion at this time?
Hi, Anita Carlson, Town Clerk. I just want to make a couple comments first, and then I'm going to offer an amendment to the article. I've been an elected town clerk for 10 years, and the town clerk's office as elected is one of the oldest offices in any municipality in Massachusetts. And I understand the argument, especially about the clerk being the chief elections official, and that therefore the autonomy of being elected is preferable. But over the years, our office has become more and more complex. We still do the basics, birth, death, and marriage licenses, and run elections. But we are constantly in touch with so many state agencies and departments. We interact with so many different computer systems that it would be really, unfortunately, really difficult for someone to come in and assume the office without any, any background at all. I know excellent appointed town clerks and excellent elected town clerks. But lately, there's been, even in our area, some appointed town clerks who have gotten appointed without any prior experience, and they're not staying in the job. They're, they're finding themselves overwhelmed. So I guess for that reason, I, I do support the article. But I would like to move to amend Article 18 as read by striking the words "upon the expiration of the current term" and inserting in their place "upon the retirement of..."
Second. This amendment has been made and been seconded. So I would like to take discussion for the amendment only, and then we will vote on the amendment once there's no other discussion, and then we will vote on the motion with the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? And my technical support is making changes in the computer system as we speak. Do you choose to speak on the amendment?
Harry Sekman, 13 Beachwood Drive. First, I'd like to thank you, Anita, for all the years of service. It's been wonderful having you. But I do have a question. We're saying that upon retirement, are you saying you're going to be here for another 20 years?
No. I mean, I'm close to choosing a date. I just didn't want it to become, if I felt that I needed to work, you know, even six months past next, next May, that I would have to apply for my own job. So that's basically why. Yes, relatively soon.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add a friendly...
Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, Anita, I'm sorry.
Is this on the amendment?
Madam Town Clerk, I was hoping that we could make a slight amendment to your amendment, because for, just for possible thinking of options, if you were to retire before the special act were to pass, then it would allow whoever was then appointed or to stay as, I mean, whoever was then elected to stay as town clerk until their retirement. So I think we should note of the, let's just see. Sorry, guys. This is how the sausage is made. Okay, so let's say upon the expiration, I'm sorry, upon the retirement of the elected town clerk holding office at the time this vote is approved.
So that's just going to be a friendly correction of Anita's already made motion if there's no objection? Is there any other further discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none?
Excuse me, but I'm a little confused. Could you read that whole amendment again for me, please?
So to simplify it, it's, it's, if the amendment passes, it is with the current, what Lauren did was she put a motion in there to clarify it, so if Anita retired before and somebody got in there, like myself, I could stay there for 20 years if this is the application. So it's more or less covering it. It's for Anita and Anita only. Understand? Lauren, say it like you should. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So the concern was that if Anita retired before this act takes effect, then whoever was holding elected office at that time could continue... was holding elected office at that time could continue to seek elected office until the time that they retired. And so that wasn't the intent of the amendment. The amendment was to ensure that this Town Clerk would be able to run for elected office until she retires.
Okay. Just a point of, and I'm sure Anita means that she's not going to stay here forever. She wants to retire and make a life of herself too after this. I'm just concerned that if we do the amendment and she's here for 20 years, the amendment becomes useless because it's only upon her retirement. So if that's what I'm hearing is correct.
The intent of your motion.
Okay.
Moderator, through you. That was the intent of Anita's motion. So I just wanted to make sure that the motion that she made, the amendment that she made, did that. So that's what she's proposing.
What I meant was, if we pass the amendment and she's here for 10 years, then we have 10 years, I know you're not, okay? Then we have 10 years before we can appoint anybody. Is to move this to make an appointment basis. I agree. I think we should protect Anita. I'm just concerned that it could go on for a long time, for whatever reason. Okay? So that's just my comment.
While obviously I respect the different questions and issues being discussed, if Anita were to retire, that would be one way. If Anita were to run and not get elected, I'm sorry, that would do the same thing. So it's just to allow her to continue to be elected as many times as the people elect her.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Does everyone understand the amendment? We're voting on only the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please hit the green button. All those opposed, please use the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion, the amendment carries at 1:47, yes, 40, no. Now we'll have a discussion on the amendment, the motion with the amendment. Please.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. I just have one simple question. What precipitated this change? What's, why is this all of a sudden happening? Is something, you know, is something going on that there's a reason for this? I guess I'm just curious why.
The article was brought forth by the Select Board, so I think they could answer that.
Mr. Moderator. Exactly what one of the residents said is that as the, and actually as Anita agreed, the position keeps getting more and more complicated. And it is, it can be a popularity contest at an election. And we just want to be sure that we have a Town Clerk that can, I mean, one comes in and the next day, there's no training, there's no transition, that kind of thing. So we just are trying to ensure that we have a Town Clerk that best suits the position, much like other positions that we have in town. And it is the only paid position that is elected, not appointed, in town.
Natalie Borison, 15 Brunel Drive. I was just curious if this does pass, would there be anything on term limits for this? Will there be any set? Or will it just, I mean, if we get somebody that's awful, we're just stuck?
We haven't talked about specifics yet, but department heads and such, this is a position that would fall under that. We typically do a contract with probationary periods. Some people have one-year contracts, others have three-year contracts, so.
Kareem Puliafico again. Now, if Anita runs and gets elected again, or no, somebody runs against her and she doesn't win, what happens to the person that wins? Or doesn't she do another election? If she's not ready to retire, she could run again.
But if she gets, doesn't get elected, if somebody runs against her, then what happens there?
Mr. Moderator, the position would change to an appointed position upon retirement or a loss at the polls. Whichever is earlier.
If I, a winner wouldn't have a job. A winner, with the exception of Anita, would not have a job.
The winner would be elected until the position was appointed.
Mr. Moderator, Lou Carnaculie again. As a former teacher, I used to like to read between the lines. You were a former student of mine, weren't you?
Yes, Mr. Carnaculie.
My government class, and look at you now.
Yes.
So anyway, I like to read between the lines. And when I hear stuff like a popularity contest, it's like, you know, the dog ate my homework. Come on. We should not change this position. It's worked well since the beginning of this town. I've been here since 1973. There's been no, I'm not aware of any issues. All right? Vote this thing down. This is the most ridiculous motion I've heard since '73. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Wayne Stoddard, 8 Nancy Drive, here in Rutland. I have nothing against anyone on this board. But I think when I started listening to this, I thought I was walking by in a clear pond. Now I think I'm 10 feet in the mud. There's been so many things suggested here and there. This is not about Anita. This is about a position. And once you do this, you establish a precedent. Once a precedent is established, you can be in hot water for a long time if you need to change it. It's been successful. I think the new Town Administrator needs the opportunity to also assess the situations and maybe come back with another one. I don't know. But to me, we shouldn't go along with this amendment or with this article. Really, let it stand as it currently is. I wish Anita the best, but I don't think the town wants any more problems.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there?
Hi. Trusta Santillo, 124 Charnock Hill Road. I just want to say that Rutland is a great community. However, the reality of the situation is that we may need to look beyond our town for qualified candidates for some of these positions. That goes for all department heads, not just what's at stake here for the Town Clerk. So I'm in support of saying yes to this because we need to continue to attract talent. And unfortunately, talent for this position may not be in Rutland right now. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Does everybody understand what we're voting on? We're voting on an article that talks about a Town Clerk that's going from an appointed, excuse me, from an elected to an appointed position. And there's an amendment in there to protect Anita until she retires or loses an election. Everybody understands that? A yes, a yes vote, it will change the position to appointed. A no vote will stay the way it is, as all election. Everybody understands that? The ballot box is now open. Those in favor, please use the green button. Those opposed, please use the no button. Red button, which is the no button. This is just majority vote as well, please, folks. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries at 1:02, yes, 88, no's. Moving on to Article 19. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Section 41, subsection 110A, allowing the, to see if the town will vote to, no, to allowing the Town Clerk's office to remain closed on all Saturdays as a legal holiday for calculating the timeframe for filing matters with the office or take any action in relation thereto.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 41, Section 110A, allowing the Town Clerk's office to remain closed on all Saturdays as a legal holiday for calculating the timeframe for filing matters with that office.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by using the green button. All those opposed, please use the red button. Scotty. In the essence of saving time, folks, the next article, we're still voting now. The next article will discuss about the Town Moderator's position going from a one-year term to a three-year term. I'm going to step aside as moderator. Scott Davis, who is the Assistant Town Moderator, will run this, so there's no question of my intention. Does everybody choose to ballot on this particular motion? I will declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 1:58, yes, 14, no's. Mr. Scott Davis.
Can you hear me? Article 20 is now before you. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 2, to increase the term of the elected Town Moderator position from one year to three years, with such increase to take effect beginning at the 2024 annual town election, or take any action in relation thereto.
Would the town vote to pursue to the provisions of MGL C-41 and 2, to increase the term of the elected Town Moderator position from one year to three years, with such increase to take effect beginning at 2024 annual town meeting?
Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, do I have a Finance Committee approval?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you.
I think the reference at the end of that motion was to be the annual town election, 2024 annual town election. I just want to clarify.
Did I leave the word annual out? Is that what you're saying?
That, just to be clear, it's the annual town election and not the meeting. So the motion, I believe, referred to town meeting, but it should be the town election.
Okay, so we can take the motion then with that discussion. Thank you.
I would like to amend my motion to read election and not meeting.
Is it from the amendment, please? Yes, thank you. Try to keep this simple, Randy. Now, you've heard the motion, you've heard the Finance Committee. It's amended to say the election rather than the meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any discussion? Yes, I have somebody coming up.
Thomas Rukicki, 17, Proudie Lane. I like you, Mr. Moderator, but I guess my one and only question is why?
Yeah, I was one of the ones that brought that up, but we had talked about it for years. Randy has to, and no one's run against Randy for I don't know how many years, but he has to, every year, get all those signatures, turn in, you know, turn in the papers and run again. And it's not uncommon for moderators to be appointed for three years. So we thought that we would, I mean, elected for three years, so we thought we would put that forward.
Thank you.
John Rukicki, 17, Proudie Lane, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Finance Committee. Would anyone like to speak as to why it was favorably recommended on this article?
The Town Clerk and the Select Board told us the reasons why. We said favorable, agreeing with the reason why she brought it forward.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none?
Green button for yes.
Hearing none, yes. The green button is a yes to vote to change the Moderator's term to three years. The red button is a no, to leave it the same as it is. The ballot box is open. How do I read that thing? Okay, I see the numbers coming. They're still coming, they're still coming. Has everybody voted the wish? Has everybody voted the wishes? Then I declare the ballot box closed. The vote is in favor, 152, yeses, 29, no's. Randy, it's a three-year term next time.
Moving on to Article 21. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for stepping in. To see if the town will vote to pursue to the...
Pursuant to provisions, MGL 4452E 1/2, to establish a revolving fund for parking lot and playing field maintenance at town schools as currently described in the school lease agreement between the town of Rutland and Wachusett Regional School District. And for such purposes, to amend the general bylaw, revolving funds, Section 6, by adding a new row at the end of the chart appearing therein as printed in Article 21 on the warrant. And further, to separately establish an annual expenditure limit of $77,594.16, with such expenditure limit to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes, prior to July 1 in any year, to change the expenditure limit for the ensuing fiscal year, provided, however, that at the request of the entity authorized to expend such funds, the Select Board, with the approval of the Finance Committee, may increase such limit for that fiscal year only.
Receive support? Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Michelle Van Reet, Charnock Hill Road. I'm just questioning why this article is here now. I've never seen it before, I don't think.
Excuse me. I guess you can. Yeah, every year we get X amount of dollars, obviously, by from the schools to maintain fields, parking lots, street maintenance, so on and so forth. That money goes directly into the GF. So all they're trying to do is make sure that we can track it better as to how much money it's costing us to take care. So, and the other thought is, it's not a thought, this will go into whether the override passes or not at the election booth. We want to keep it this way. Been trying to do this for years, just so we could better track how much money we cost we can withdraw from this revolving fund account, only as opposed to general fund.
So I have a follow-up question. Does that mean if we go to this type of a limit, that at some point in the year we stop plowing, or we stop mowing the lawn, or we stop maintaining the fields? Is that what you're saying?
Under agreement with the district, we have to maintain the school buildings. We're under agreement. We said this is a signed agreement that we get from the school district.
Stan, what would happen if it does happen? Stan, what would happen if it does happen to go over that dollar amount?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Does this work? Yes, it is. Essentially, what a revolving fund is, is that the money that's received for that particular purpose is separated from other monies that come into the town, and it's used only for the purpose for which it is authorized, which in this case is school facilities maintenance as described in the lease agreement. This money comes in now, and it goes into the general fund, and we appropriate it out. So town meeting votes to take it out. But we have an obligation to do this, and this means that it'll be simpler to go forward in the future. The other thing about revolving funds is that you can only spend the money that you have. So this is not asking any money to be raised and appropriated by the town, so nothing on the tax levy, and it's not giving carte blanche to the, you know, to the school, Department of Public Works, to do field maintenance up to whatever amount it wants. It can only be up to the specific amount that's in the fund at the time of the expenditure. So the most that the town would be able to pay is the limit that's been put on that, and that's why that expenditure limit is approved at town meeting.
So could you tell me how much, if any, we've gone over that expenditure, say, for the last year or two years?
I can tell you that, Michelle, because we haven't tracked this. This has never been tracked. We get the money, the money goes to the general fund, we still do the work, but it's never been tracked as to how much it costs for school maintenance. This is going to help us track, you know, if for some reason there's some left over, we have an easy season, we can also keep it in there for capital improvements for the school, for the school buildings only.
I'm more concerned about the fact that usually that's not what happens, right? So if it goes over, do we stop maintaining things? I'm concerned about that.
I understand your concern. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, just if I may. There is an appropriation for maintenance in the general fund, so that would continue to be available even if the cost exceeded the amount in the revolving fund. But as Gary indicated, this will directly tie the amount expended to the amount received, so that the town can keep track of how much it's spending.
Thank you. Jen Ledger, Nye Joanna Drive. First question is, the motion says it's specific to field maintenance and parking lots. Is that the limit of what it's spent on, or are there other facility maintenance, like, within the building that it would be used for?
No, nothing within the building. It's all for grounds. The school, the district are responsible for the buildings inside. And there's also a cap on dollar limits that we go through if repairs to a building was over X amount of dollars, and the town has to step in. But this is for field maintenance, cutting, lining, patching, driveways, striping, road striping, the driveways and the parking lots.
Would it include spending money for increasing fields if we need to, or anything that, with adding dugouts or updating?
Any increase in, increase in the size of the fields or additional work that was outside the agreement right now, that would have to be negotiated when the new agreement comes in for schools. So that obviously would be a different amount, but would that have to be negotiated?
And last question, is this, the whole full amount, I see it's per school that it would go in. Does it all go into one general fund? So how do you ensure that it's evenly, I guess evenly distributed, or each school gets what it's owed?
Twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents per school. So it will be tracked, it will be tracked per school, excuse me, as to how much we spend.
You asked a lot of questions.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Yes.
One other, one other part of this article that, if the two-and-a-half override does not pass, this gives us the ability to contract out if the highway staff is not available. That's one of the, that's one of the other reasons that nobody mentioned. So everybody in the room understands that, okay?
Any discussion? Mr. Kelleher already said you asked a lot of questions, so...
Sorry, Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive again. So just if it doesn't pass, and this money goes into the general fund, there...
Mr. Moderator, what they were saying, what the Finance Committee was saying, is that if the override fails, and therefore there's not enough money for the department, or not to staff the department, this would still allow the town to comply with the lease agreement, the agreement it has.
The question being, though, if we don't create these funds specifically for the purpose of maintaining these fields and parking lots at the schools, it's, we still get the money from the district. It goes into the general fund, but that doesn't guarantee that that money goes to the schools. Is that correct? They can be used for...
Mr. Moderator, that is the case. Town meeting appropriates the money from the general fund, so however that money gets appropriated is what's available. This is a mechanism to kind of keep track of how much is spent and how much it costs.
But again, it's not guaranteed that that would go to that facility maintenance if it's in the general fund, unless it's appropriated for that.
That's correct. That's correct.
I have another follow-up. I'm really not sure how, how do we not know what we're already spending for it?
Well, we know what we're spending when we go and patch holes. We know, basically, how much time it takes to mow a lawn or a playing field, or how much the line stripe, we get prices for that. But as far as like a snow and ice frost situation, it's an operational thing. It just happens as the guys are out and go through and take care of the schools. Honestly, Michelle, it's not been tracked properly forever. So we want to track it, we want to see what we've got, and the main hope, if this passes, is that we'll have extra money in that at the end of the year that we could be able to use for capital improvements on the school buildings.
But why don't you track it anyway, and then, like, if you, shouldn't you be able to do that already the way it is? If you track what you're spending already?
Mr. Moderator, through you. So in the general fund, all money is fungible. Every dollar is kind of the same as every other dollar. And so they have an appropriate, the town appropriates money every year for DPW services, and whatever that number is, the town can spend it however it chooses, essentially, to get the work done that needs to be done. So it is, the Department of Public Works expenditures are tracked, but the particular holes that were filled, or the particular amount of time that was spent at the schools is not. It's all within the same kind of general appropriation.
I understand that, but if, but if you're asking us to separate it out, but you can't tell us what that really means in terms of getting stuff done at the schools, then I'm not sure why we would make a change.
Mr. Moderator, through you. This budget, as you all know, is very specifically developed so that the town can continue to do the things that the town needs to do and wants to do. So ensuring that the money for these improvements is set aside in a fund that can only be expended for those purposes means, no matter what happens on the override side of things, the town will still have the money to do what it wants to with the fields and the field maintenance under the agreement with the regional school district.
But don't we have to do that anyway, since that's the money that's...
Mr. Moderator? No, in fact, any money that comes into the town is considered general fund money and can be appropriated for any legal purpose. So when the money comes in, normally, it can be spent on that purpose, or it can be spent for any other purpose. Every dollar is fungible, and town meeting decides how that money will be allocated. So instead, the way it is now, it could be that 24,000, 25,000, whatever it is, is spent per school on school maintenance, facility maintenance, or not. But this ensures that it will only be available for that purpose.
Okay.
Comment?
I would comment that the Finance Committee discussed this article with the department heads. It was brought attention that if we didn't do this, what we would do is not have funding if the override didn't pass. That's it. So we're putting this mechanism in there so that the DPW can hire some people to take care of the schools, and the lawns, and the grass, and all that, if the override doesn't pass. We're contracted with the schools financially every year. We're just nervous. The only reason this is even here, and we voted favorably on it, was so that we have a mechanism to take care of the schools if needed, if the override doesn't pass. It's just a stopgap. There's no more, we have a contract with them. I'm sorry, Michelle, it wasn't explained to you properly, but that's the basics, guys. That's all. We're just trying to cover our bases.
This is to ensure that the schoolwork does get done?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sherry Haber, 1 Olivia Lane. I agree, and I do appreciate the revolving fund aspect. My concern is, if we have a horrible snow year, we do have a lease agreement that says that the town is going to take care of the driveways and the parking lots. And if we get to a point where we have exceeded $77,594, just clarify for everyone, that the DPW is still going to plow the parking lots. Yes?
Yes, they are.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by voting green. All those opposed, same sign. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries 154, yes, 13, no's. Moving on to Article 22. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Section 44, subsection 53F and 1/2, for the purpose of establishing a storm water enterprise fund to be effective July 1, 2024, or take any action in relation thereto.
Vote to accept the provisions of MGL C-4453F and 1/2, for the purpose of establishing a storm water enterprise fund to be effective on July 1, 2024.
Permission of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Tommy, you have permission to leave?
Joe Becker, 18, Crestview. How would the enterprise be funded?
Separate, Mr. Ma, I'm sorry. DPW separate and be in the tax bill.
Yes, please.
Great question. Does this work? Can you hear me? Great question. This language does not include a funding mechanism. This is just the establishment of the stormwater enterprise fund. I would recommend a future town meeting to think about funding this enterprise fund, because especially recently, actually, it was my first day here, we get a call from the USCPA related to our stormwater permit, notifying us that they are aware that we're not in compliance with their stormwater requirements. Hence why this is a good first step. A lot of communities have already done this, to address some of the stormwater requirements and needs that we have coming from the federal and state government. So this is just establishing the enterprise fund, and I would recommend a future town meeting, and I think the idea with the conversation with the board when establishing this warrant article would be, the town administrator and the Department of Public Works would come with a recommendation, a formal recommendation to town meeting to fund this. And certainly, there's a lot of methods to fund it, whether it's a flat fee or a fee per, an engineered fee per, you know, the, kind of the aspects of a parcel. But this article as presented does not have a funding mechanism.
So, follow-up to that. I get it in concept, and I know stormwater management has been an unfunded mandate for eons and a day, and hence why we haven't done probably what we should have done for a long, long time. But I would just offer that if we're going to set up the fund, that the plan to fund the fund should be known and communicated prior to establishing the fund. So my recommendation would be that we hold off on this until we know exactly how this is going to be funded, so the taxpayer is fully understanding where the money will come from, once this fund is created.
Can I reply, Mr. Moderator? Thank you for the comments, Mr. Becker. I respectfully disagree. I think this is prudent. We received a follow-up from that call that I received on my first day. We received a follow-up correspondence from the EPA, essentially with a little bit stricter language, notifying us that if we are not in compliance, that there's potential for civil penalties of up to $27,000 a day, if not around that number. We need to get this started, and I agree with you that a funding structure probably should have been set in place, but candidly, we can get there at a future town meeting with, and inform the voters of what that funding structure looks like. And also, this is, I think, a good first step to let the federal and state officials know that we are aware of this requirement, and we're being proactive in addressing this requirement by establishing this fund.
That, yeah, but I would argue that it doesn't slow us down one way or the other, whether we vote this up or down tonight, because the bottom line is, it's not funded. So I don't see the harm in waiting until the taxpayer knows how this fund is going to get funded before establishing the fund. A fund without any money doesn't do us any good, anyway.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? All those, all those in favor, please signify by using your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish? Declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries 134, yes, 27, no's. Moving on to Article 23. To see if the town will vote to purchase and equip a small dump truck with a plow, an F-550 or equivalent, and for such purpose, to transfer a sum of money from water and sewer retained earnings, or take any action in relation thereto.
I move that the town vote to purchase and equip a small dump truck with plow, an F-550 or equivalent, and for such purposes, to transfer 111,587.56 from water and sewer retained earnings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? She's, I will let her go first. I saw her first, please.
Charlene O'Connor, 9 Sycamore. I just want to know how much money there is in the water and sewer retained earnings, and how this will affect what's there. Thank you.
$260,000 in there.
Suarez, 11 Pioneer Circle. Why are we using water and sewer retained earnings for this dump truck? Is my first question.
The reason is that the water and sewer guys, for the most part, right now, if there's a dump truck available from DPW, they'll use it. For the most part, they do their work out of a van. So the main part of this dump truck, if you will, is for construction purposes, and it does service all of the water and sewer lines, if you will, and sometimes that will have an effect on snow and ice control, for instance.
So if I am a resident of Rutland that is on well water, am I still going to benefit from this dump truck, but yet I'm not paying towards it?
If you're on well water, you're not paying for this dump truck. It's coming out of retained earnings and sewer.
So I am saying, as a water and sewer paying resident, that doesn't make any sense. It should only go to water and sewer sources.
This will be a water and sewer dump truck, department dump truck. That's...
Discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please. Don't vote yet. Any, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed... All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries 144 yes, 22 no's. Moving on to Article 24, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning, town zoning bylaws by deleting the text of Article 3, subsection 8B, special permit, major home occupation, and inserting in the place therefore a revised and reorganized subsection 8B home occupation bylaw, and make the related revisions to Article 1, section 5, definition, all as set forth in the handout entitled "May 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Home Occupancy", Article 24, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by deleting the text of Article 3, section 8B, special permit, major home occupation, and inserting in place thereof a revised and reorganized section 8B home occupation bylaw, and make related revisions to Article 1, section 5, definitions, all as set forth in the handout entitled "May 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Home Occupation", Article number 24, also on file with the town clerk.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
If anyone is looking for any of this, this is on page 27 of your handout. Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any, recommendation of the Planning Board, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any other discussion?
Hi, Desiree Mangum, 10 Arlene Drive. I just have a question, because we had a lot of votes about marijuana businesses in homes. Is this, does this pertain to being able to have a marijuana business in your neighborhood?
Is there any other discussion on this article? This is a two-thirds vote, folks, and the counter will help me with that. So all those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Not yet. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries 135 yes, 24 no. It's a two-thirds vote or greater. Moving on to Article 25, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, Article 7, special permits, subsection 42 and 44, by making a minor technical correction, all as set forth in the handout entitled "May 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Technical Correction", Article number 25, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, Article 7, special permits, 42 and 44, by making minor technical corrections, all as set forth in the handout entitled "May 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Technical Corrections", Article number 25, also on file with the town clerk.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion? If you'd like to see it in your handout, it is on Article, page 33. Recommendation of the Planning Board, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? This also is a two-thirds vote. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries 140 yes, 10 no's. It does pass with two-thirds. Moving on to Article 26, to see if the town will vote to create an assistant town administrator's position. The main duty of said position would be grant writing, also other duties as assigned by town administrator, or take any action in relation thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lou Carnacoli, the petitioner. I move that the town creates a position entitled Assistant Town Administrator. The primary responsibility of this person would be to write grants, or take any action thereto.
Motion has been made and seconded. I don't ask you, right? Is there any discussion on this article? You only can talk once.
What? You're cocky now. You got a three-year term. You're cocky, huh? We'll wait three years, you're gone. No, I'm only kidding. You're doing a great job. The petitioner, the piece of paper you got today, said the article does not, the article does not propose an appropriation. So it's likely the petitioner, me, will suggest. Well, I'm going to suggest right now. We have a lot of talented people in this community working for us already. Back when I was a selectman, we were very fortunate to have Jackie O'Brien and Nancy Macarusa work for us at the Board of Selectmen. They made the three of us, who fumbled a lot, look like geniuses. And they're both employed at the community right now. But we also have a young woman that's working in the selectmen's office right now, slash town administrator's office. She's the person, Ms. Murphy, who puts together this wonderful document that we can just look at and say, oh, that's what it means, huh? Before, we used to have to have all kinds of questions. So, here's my proposal, that we elevate Ms. Murphy to the assistant town administrator, that Ms. Murphy, major responsibility would be grant writing. Now, it's not going to take up all her time, but it's going to take up some part of her time. I would suggest that the selectmen come up with a reasonable, along with the town administrator, we certainly have to have his input, compensation to do this, and that she also takes care of other duties when she's not doing grants, okay? Maybe she doesn't have to do it 40 hours a week. Maybe she can do it 20 hours a week, or whatever. But when there are specific areas that we're looking for grant money, that's when she can latch onto it. And then we have a bevy of other secretaries or people that work for us that could maybe take off the slack, or we could hire somebody part-time for the outside for minimal amount of money. I believe any grant writer worth their salt, bringing in grant money, the money that we now not have, we do not have to now use with tax dollars. Therefore, those tax dollars can now go to fund positions that would be doing secretarial work, clerk work, even the position of assistant administrator. I think we, I think the time has come that we get very, very, very serious about going after that money. Last year, I went down to Mr. Representative McGovern's office looking for grant money. I took it upon myself. And he told me about the millions and millions and millions of dollars that we have, that has come to the state because of COVID. We have two crackerjack legislators that represent us, Ann Goby and Kim Ferguson, okay? A Republican and Democrat. By the way, they show the country how two people from different parties can work together, because they're terrific. And they have informed me about all kinds of money. In my days as a teacher, I know that there were private organizations out there that teachers, I didn't, but other teachers would write grants for. I'm not a good writer. Would write grants for. So there's millions of dollars available, and we're missing the boat. So I would hope that you would vote this in. And if you don't vote this in, at least sound a sound message to the Board of Selectmen, let's get this going. Let's get off our duff, and let's get this going. Now, back when I was a selectman, we didn't have to do this, because we were lucky back then. The state was providing us with tremendous funding. They had changed the school funding, and we were like millionaires. In fact, the town of Holden took us to three or four different venues to get us to pay more money. And I like to report to you, one of my proudest moments as a selectman, we beat them every time. And I loved every second of it, okay? But times have changed, I understand that. So let's go after that grant money. Please vote yes. And let's elevate Ms. Murphy where she belongs, Assistant Town Administrator. Thank you.
Harry Sekman, 13 Beechwood Drive. Thank you, Mr. Carnacoli, for your petition. I think it's well deserved that we do look at someone like that as a grant writer. I just think that the devil is in the details. And that if that's what we want, is a grant writer, and that's their specific job, and we don't want to take them away from that, then I would like to make an amendment that we change from to create an assistant, an assistant town administrator position to a grant writer position, instead of assistant town. Let's make it so that that is the only job that person has to do. So I'd like to make that amendment.
Written before, written and handed to the town clerk before the vote's done, please.
Okay.
We're going to talk about the amendment at the moment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Obviously, my attorney is telling me I better listen, so.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So the town can only spend the money that is appropriated by the town meeting for a particular purpose. So whether we're talking about the amendment or the underlying motion, just saying we have a position doesn't create the funding for that position. And even then, even if there was an appropriation, this part, this part you're not going to like, probably. Even if there was an appropriation, there's nothing that can make the select board and force them to spend the money for that purpose. So in my opinion, this amendment and the underlying motion, whether or not amended, are simply a sense of the meeting to kind of give the select board an idea of what might be wanted in the future. And this article itself, or this motion itself, would have no legal effect.
At the moment.
John R. Kiki, 17 Proudy Lane. And that's to what Lou, I, Lou, I completely agree with you in, we should be doing this. It's strategy and over tactics. I'm very concerned of walking in with just a sense of the meeting. And if this were voted down, I do not want the select board, or the Finance Committee, or anyone else to feel that the town doesn't support doing that, because we didn't have a job description put together. We don't know what a compensation package would look like. I don't want to, I don't want to be promoting people on the fly in the middle of a town meeting to try to meet the needs of the town. It'd be nice to be able to give a message to the, to those who could establish a position, whether it's a town meeting vote to establish a position, or the select board to establish a position based on town council. I just worry that if we want to do it, let's do it the right way, figure out the right way to do it, but also tonight, find the right way to send the right message to those people. This is what we'd like done. I'm afraid of people voting down this due to the lack of detail would send a mixed message. So I would, I support what you're trying to do. I just, I'm not sure that we're going to accomplish it. That's, that's my, my comment. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Clarify the amendment being just changing the position title versus having a comment on everything?
Instead of assistant town administrator, it's going to be grant writer.
Okay. Austin has already noted that he has some ideas or thoughts on that being part of his position, grant writing. I'd like to give him the opportunity to talk about what he thinks he can do as a town administrator for that, versus having a separate position right now.
Thank you, through the moderator. I can certainly appreciate, you know, professional development and promotions. I was one of it in my, I know, very young and early career, but I've, you know, I've had the opportunity to take advantage of, I think, what you're talking about, mister, I can't pronounce your last name. I have the same last, same kind of complicated last name as you do. You know, but I think candidly, you have a, you have a town administrator, you have town staff that are already doing a lot of work on grants. Fire department's a good example. Recreation department just mentioned some grants that they've already received for, to provide the services that are delivered. So we're already doing a lot of good work. Just to give you reference, just last week, we asked for several million dollars from our state delegation to be included in the, in the state budget. So you're right. There's a lot of money out there. And we're already trying to take advantage and putting in applications to do so. So while you may have a grant writer, you may have an assistant town administrator, you may have a town administrator that will shepherd and lead the grant development process, or the application process. I'm going to rely on my department heads, because they're also subject matter experts in their departments, and they, and they know about some of these opportunities that an assistant administrator, or grant writer, or the town administrator may not know about either. So I think we do have a good operation in place. But in terms of the question about staffing and sense of the meeting, I also think that that is a process that can be followed throughout the budget process, allowing the town administrator to recommend to the select board and Finance Committee for what the staffing plan, any potential reorganizations of the community would look like. That would be the process, I think, that would be followed. And certainly, community input, I believe, is critical in the budget process. So certainly, I think a sense of the meeting would be helpful. But we have a budget process as well to inform those decisions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So town meeting can't appoint an assistant town administrator. That is a job for the executive. The executive is the select board and the town administrator. So we can't promote someone on the fly on the floor of town meeting. The only thing we're able to do is to provide that sense of the meeting with regard to whether there was an interest in having an assistant town administrator, a grant writer, or just a grant writer. But town meeting is the legislative branch. We create, we, you, create a, you can create a position, and you can fund a position, but the executive branch does the appointing and decides whether to spend the money that's appropriated by town meeting.
Thank you for that lesson. I taught government in high school for 20 years. I was a selectman for nine years. I totally understand what the two of you are talking about, okay? If you read my article again, it's very specific. I don't mention, in my article, I don't mention a specific person. I was giving some input in terms of how this could be funded. I gave a potential recommendation. Ms. Murphy may not want the job, and I hate putting her on the spot like that. But that was my example of that we have the talent already here. So don't get all confused by all this, you know, giving Mr. Carnacoli a history lesson, or a government lesson. It's a very simple statement. Do we create a position assistant to the, to the town administrator, not just to do grants, but to help out and other stuff? And there's a possibility, a number of ways to take care of that position. So don't be baffled by that. Don't worry about that. Let's get the position in, then it'll be filled. I have all the faith in the world in this Board of Selectmen, that they can figure out a way of doing it. I'm sure they can. I'll put my faith in them. Thank you.
We're talking about amendment.
Norold, 149 Palmagussit. I wanted to make a point somewhat to what Austin said. I know for a fact that we've got a police chief, a fire chief, dispatch, we've got library, we've got a planner. All of them are putting grants in. library, we've got a planner, all of them are putting grants in. We've already got people doing the job. So I don't see the need for this at this time. If, to the town administrator's point, if there's more need for that, he can appoint town staff to do that. That's his job and we have the staff that's done it. And I know for a fact of how much money's been brought in, in those departments by the grant writing of those individuals. Thank you.
Natalie Ward, Jane Brunel. I was just, not to put you on the spot, but I was just wondering how Tamika would feel about that position and how it would alter what she does day to day? Well, I mean, just as a representative of the position that she's in now, which is what is being, the amendment would be changing from the assistant position to the grant writer position. I don't know what you're shaking your head at, though.
Mr. Moderator, through you. The person who's currently holding an assistant to the Board of Selectmen or assistant to the town administrator, this isn't about a person, we're talking about, and I understand what you're saying, but the perspective that we need to look at this from is whether we want the select board and the town administrator to want, to create that position. And whether it's one person or another or another, no one here can predict that. So, an individual employee's position on something really isn't appropriate for discussion here.
Where I was confused is that when he had discussed the proposal, he had said, you know, elevate a specific person, but we're just talking about the position in general, not a person that is already in a position, potentially going to a new position. Is that, that's the clarification?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
If I may, that was why I was trying to explain what we're doing here. Because it isn't about a particular individual and it isn't even about creating a position. It's about whether the meeting might be in favor of creating a position.
Yep, just, my name is Diane McNod. I live on Ten Blor Berry Lane and I've been resident for 58 years. And I agree with what Lou has said, and you do need somebody doing this. Because this is our tax dollars and I feel like there's a lot of word salad going on, a lot of, like, where is the transparency? Are we going to be able to see where that money is allocated to? And I can say, in my home, I had five sewer floods in my home. When I went to DPW and I had gone to you guys and I said, I'm not paying for this anymore, my insurance company canceled me, I called Boston. They have money for us to repair all of these pipes that are sagging, all of these problems that are happening. But it takes an investment of somebody's time and you definitely need somebody. You can't just have a part-time person. It takes a lot to write a grant. And I know it's available because I called. I called Boston myself. They're, like Mr. Carnacoli said, there's millions of dollars, we're not accessing them. And it's coming down on the taxpayer and maybe some people are okay with just keep rolling the money in and, you know, not looking into other avenues. That's my question. Because I did have to look into other avenues.
Good to go. Just a, just a quick response as well. So, there is already a public transparency component to the way that the select board accepts gifts, has to be done in a public meeting. So, when a gift or a grant is received by a department that is, yes, yep.
To, like at the town hall, is there something there that we could see?
Yeah, yeah. So, and just to be candid about the whole transparency component, that's something that I think is crucial and important for the town administrator's office to be transparent about not only the budget process, but especially, you know, grants and gifts and projects that we're working on. So, you know, certainly, I think, an opportunity to develop a grants portal or something that could be on the website to be transparent. But in terms of the acceptance of gifts, obviously, there was an article tonight, a standard article, but at, at select board meetings, happens actually very regularly as gifts and grants are received, they formally accept them. And those grants have to be used for those particular purposes. I just, again, want to reiterate, we're already doing a lot of work on grants and we're already applying and have been successful in receiving grants. I also want to add, in the proposed budget, the override budget, the select board has added an additional allocation in the town administrator's office budget for purchase services for contracted grant administration and grant application services. So they've had a conversation over the past year and have identified a funding source to assist the town with developing maybe some of the more comprehensive grant applications that we already are applying to.
Thank you.
The amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the TA, if I may, Mr. Moderator. So you already have, you are already developing a process for grant writing. You have department heads that are working on it, okay? So is there a need for even the petition then, to set aside a particular name for a person, when you're, when you are in charge of working on that? You are the one who's going to pick a person, you're the one who's going to develop the process. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's my understanding, especially this article as his petition is non-binding and is advisory to the select board and the town. But certainly, if you read my job description, grants are in there. If you read some of the job descriptions of the department heads, grants are in there. It's something that we're already doing and we do have a process for applying, receiving, and administrating those grants.
And you are looking to move that process forward for the town. I know in the past, we haven't had a lot of grant stuff. So with you as the new TA then, I guess, we are looking forward to develop that process. Is that correct?
I'm big on grants.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I pull my amendment to the, I pull my amendment then. Since we're going to leave that up to the TA and we don't need to worry about an article being approved for a particular name or a position, since we can rely on him to do the job. Okay? Is that right, attorney? I can pull it?
Mr. Moderator, once that motion is on the floor, it can only be withdrawn with the consent of the body.
Consent of the body to withdraw the motion, the amendment. Yes.
Is it the consent of the body that is here that we'd like to, he'd like to remove his amendment? Do you choose to consent it? With all those in favor of removing it, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? All right, you just saved it for the moment. Amendment. So now, we're going to discuss the main motion, I think.
I think we just ought to give Austin Saganowicz a chance. He's only been here for a few weeks. Give the guy a shot. And if it doesn't work out, we can, we can move on with this later. And if you want to give the select board a sense of the meeting, send an email to the, to the Board of Selectmen. Call them up. Do it that way. That's it.
Sherry Haber, Olivia Lane. I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
I just, I didn't know if I needed that screen out.
Just confirming that the vote to call the question was unanimous.
Yes. Just to confirm the question, the question to call the question was unanimous, just like it stated. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. The motion is defeated. 25 yes, 82 noes. Folks, I have just a couple more housekeeping things, if you don't mind waiting. It is upon my position as moderator to appoint two positions tonight to the finance board. The two positions appointees to a three-year term will be Karen Norwell and Darren Ross, will both be staying on the committee this year. At this time, I encourage everyone to vote on Monday, which the ballot box is open, which is very, very critical for the Prop 2 and 1/2, as well as to vote for a moderator just for the last time, for the one-year term, please, and others. And then I would like to have Carol Benoit come up here and speak for a moment.
Surprise. I thought Tamika was doing this. We just want to take a moment to embarrass the heck out of Gary. And we thought we'd do it at the beginning, but he would not be able to deal with the whole meeting. So, Gary, thank you for the past year. You came in this year, this time last year, and got us sued that last budget season. And we didn't get you out in time to, before this one, and you did it again. And we want to just take a minute to thank you. And Tamika got this going for us and just, we wish you well. We will miss you. And I will take you up on, I know your number, so I'll call whenever I can. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much. Oh, oh, shit. I can say that now. What are you going to do, fire me? Thank you very much. As I said earlier, I want everybody to know, it's really been an honor and a privilege to serve here. I'd also like to, I did before, thank members of the finance committee, certainly the three-year, Mr. Moderator, Carol Benoit, who, her term is over now, and also to London Nichols, whose term is over. Skips it, skips it, too, we won't talk about him. But thank you all, thank for your service, both of you, and also, it's been a pleasure to work for the board for the past year. I've enjoyed it here, haven't bumped with too many heads, but really, thank you, thank you so much. It's been an honor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ross? All those in favor of adjourning? All those opposed? Thank everybody for coming and spending the evening with us.